Call the council meeting to order. Aaron, you can sit down. Welcome to all the throngs of people. All right, I will call the meeting to order. A motion to reconvene in the open meeting. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion to drop the minutes of the open council meeting held on January 30th, 2017. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to drop the minutes of the public hearing zoning held on January 31st, 2017. Been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion to resolve into a committee of the whole. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And the reports are from the executive committee of council. Counselor Dollywell, please. Oh, well, we're without Counselor Dollywell. He was here. I know he was here. We just called your committee, Counselor Dollywell. All right, we're on item A. And that's the grant applications.
Thank you, Your Worship. Excuse me about the delay. So can I get myself oriented here? On behalf of the executive committee, Your Worship, I'd like to make the following motions. The first one is 17 dot 01 is Burnaby Hostess Society. And the recommendation is that an in-kind grant up to the amount of $1,500 be awarded to the Burnaby Hostess Society for the 15th Annual Hike for Hostess Burnaby to be held in 27th May, May 7, 2017 at Central Park.
It's been moved and seconded. Yes, Counselor McEnam?
It was in kind.
Yeah, in kind.
Yeah, because it doesn't say it in the main motion.
It does. It says that in.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In kind, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, question's been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. You're late, you get a rough ride.
Second item, Your Worship, 17 dot 2 is the society to end homelessness in Burnaby. That recommendation is that an in-kind grant of $520 be awarded to the society to end homelessness in Burnaby for the Coldest Night of the Year Walk to be held on February 25th, 2017.
Second. Been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Next item is Bullying Canada Inc., Your Worship. The recommendation is that this grant request be denied.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item number 17 dot 04, Moss Crop Secondary School. Recommendation is that a grant in the amount of $200 be awarded to Moss Crop Secondary School in support of the Dry Grad Event.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Next item is 17 dot 05, Sandra's Closet LLC. Recommendation is that this grant request be denied.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item number 17 dot 06, Stony Creek Environment Committee. Recommendation is that a grant in the amount of $500 be awarded to the Stony Creek Environment Committee for a bee pollinator awareness project in 2017.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item number 17 dot 07, Rotary Club of Burnaby Metro Town. Recommendation is that an in-kind grant of $2,500 be awarded to the Rotary Club of Burnaby Metro Town for the 2017 Wine, Food, Music Festival to be held on April 22nd, 2017 at the Nikke National Museum and Cultural Centre.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item number 17 dot 08, Burnaby Community Services. Recommendation is that a grant in the amount of $28,000 be awarded to Burnaby Community Services for core programs and publications in 2017.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item number 0, 17 dot 09, Burnaby Community Services. Recommendation is that an in-kind grant up to the amount of $3,875 be awarded to Burnaby Community Services for various publication in 2017.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you, Counselor Dollywell. And the next report is also from the executive committee, item 3. B.
Yeah, thank you. It's item number, first item is, Your Worship, is Scandinavian Cultural Society. And the recommendation is that a festivals Burnaby Grant Neighborhood Event in the amount of $2,000 be awarded to the Scandinavian Cultural Society for the Leaf Eric Sunday Festival to be held on September 30th, 2017 to October 1st at the Scandinavian Culture Centre.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Next item is South Burnaby Lawn Bowls Club. Your Worship, recommendation is that a festival Burnaby Grant Neighborhood Event in the amount of $2,400 be awarded to the South Burnaby Lawn Bowls Club for the Centennial Celebrations to be held February to July 2017 at the clubhouse at Kingsway and Enman.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Next item is, Your Worship, the Vancouver Cantonese Opera. Recommendation is that a festival Burnaby Grant Small Scale Event in the amount of $3,500 be awarded to the Vancouver Cantonese Opera for the performance of the reunion of a white hair to be held on July 22nd, 2017 at the Michael J. Fox Theatre.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Next item is Ocean Canada Inc., its Carrickton Festival. Recommendation is that this grant request be denied.
Been seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
That's it, Your Worship, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dollywell. And item 3. C is Financial Management Committee, Counselor Johnson.
If I would move the recommendation. This report, Your Worship, is from staff. It's our annual review of the city's investments, both on their soundness and the annual return. For 2016, the city was able to yield a return of 3.62% on our investments, thanks to our hard work by our finance staff. Pretty good annual rate of return in relation to what I'm sure most of us are getting on our RSPs and other investments. That actually yielded the city roughly $44 million in annual earnings that will be then put back into the reserves and/or to keep down the tax return.
Thank you. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Next, Your Worship, regarding the 2017 BC Homeowner Grant Program, and I would move the recommendation if you receive for information purposes. Your Worship, really quick report. Council will remember back in April of 2016, the Finance Management Committee through council sent a request to the Union of BC Municipalities to find, to petition the Minister of Finance undertake a provincial review of the homeowner grant in order to make it more equitable for those of us living in the lower mainland. The province did announce late last month that they would be increasing the threshold to $1.7 million from 1.2, I believe it was. Increasing the grant threshold, which would supposedly reduce the number of people that were no longer eligible because of the increased assessments in getting the grant. The report this before us, our staff looked at the numbers in relation to the announcement by the province, and it will make marginal difference in the city of Burnaby. I believe the province is targeting a 90% recovery of eligibility for the grant, at a full grant. And in Metro Vancouver, it's only 83% of homes that will actually still be able to attain it with this enhanced grant, enhanced threshold. And in Burnaby, roughly 71%. So there's still a lot of people that are going to find that when they get their tax notice, the province has taken away a good portion of their homeowner's grant. I don't know what to say other than that. The report this before us is pretty clear in indicating that we have actually looked at the numbers. We've actually lobbied the province, but they still are unable to address a system that doesn't favor those people living outside of Metro Vancouver. Those of us that live in Metro Vancouver, which pay the bulk of the taxes, are getting the worst end of the deal on this one.
Counselor Dollywell.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for this report, Your Worship. It is pretty well a carry-on from what was last year. We see a reduction of properties that are eligible, a number of properties that are eligible for a homeowner grant in 2017 compared to what was in 2016 and then before that, 2015. Every year over the last, I guess, five years, if you look at it, the percentage has consistently dropped from 92% to 77.8%. That is a significant drop within the city of Burnaby, the properties that are eligible for full grant. This program, this homeowner program, homeowners' grant program continues to be very spotty throughout the province, particularly over the last five years. Lower mainland has consistently suffered compared with the rest of the province. I think it continues to be where a lot of tax dollars are collected for school, continues to service for the rest of the province in terms of the, because the homeowner grant doesn't apply as much here as it applies outside the lower mainland. I think our suggestion from this council last year to the province and to the, through UBCM was a full review. Nothing short of just a cursory look that they do every year just prior to when the bills are just about to go out and just tinkering with the threshold isn't good enough. What needs to be done is a thorough review of which makes it fair and even right through the province, which means that most likely, at least if not at the city level, but at least at the regional district level, there need to be a separate threshold if you want to be fair. But the fairness comes in when people across the province are treated the same way. If the province intends to have a 91%, which by the way is a drop from what then originally started of the target people to attend, then they need to be living up to that commitment for every taxpayer, every property tax, every property taxpayer in the province. But that's really not the case. I'm certain many people in this city, in this district, in our city, in the metro town would rather see their assessment value in line with whenever they're going to sell the value, sell their home, rather than each year which goes up and down, mostly up, which punishes them for having to live in this part of the province. So, the report doesn't say that, but perhaps sometime when we get the opportunity, we need to repeat our ask of the government to say, "I just scratched this program completely," or make it fair. Find some other way to really support affordability in Metro Vancouver. This is not adding anything to the affordability. This is not helping a whole lot, but it is punishing certainly those who are on fixed income, Your Worship. Perhaps someday, maybe through the community development committee, once we had a chance to really digest all this, a motion should come forward, which is then submitted to UBCM again through Metro, perhaps working with Metro, that there is a common front to say, "Yeah, we are really, really looking for some relief for people who live in lower mainland." Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Dollywell. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for bringing forward this report again for us this year. And I think what's interesting is it shows the continual downward trend towards the number of properties in our city, and I'm assuming it would be the same for others in the lower mainland relative to the rest of the province, even when the province makes the huge adjustment in the thresholds from where you don't lose the grant anymore. It's, I can't remember, was it Lassimer or the one before, when we had CTV here in council talking to us about this situation? And I had found that house on the Pino Noir Drive in West Kelowna? So, I looked up how that house is doing relative to the property grants again. And I think it was two years ago, but whenever it was, that house was valued at $1,400,000, and it had just about lost all its property grant. But thanks to the northern and rural bonus, it's still got a little bit of a property grant, whereas a similar, like exact same valued house in Burnaby had lost all the grant. The house in Kelowna, the house is worth $1 million. The land is worth $400,000, wherein in Burnaby, the exact opposite, the land is worth $1 million and the house is worth $400,000. Well, everyone in council will be pleased to know that the house on Pino Noir Drive will now get the full property grant back, because even though they lost it two years ago, thanks to the government increasing the grant by $400,000, and the fact that their assessment in Kelowna didn't go up by 40% like everyone around this table did, they get their full grant back. So there's someone living in a mansion overlooking the lake in West Kelowna, and they're going to get their full property tax grant, whereas someone who's living in a modest home in this city and is a senior on a fixed income, whose property went up by 40%, will lose their property tax grant. So it just shows you the total unfairness of the system. And when you put things province-wide without taking into consideration the impact of different regional disparities, that's what you end up with, a flat tax, a flat grant program. And also, everybody's forgotten that the grant itself, the basic grant, hasn't increased in 20 years, so, or excuse me, 17 years, so what about that? There's so many things wrong with this whole system at so many levels. I appreciate Counselor Dollywell commenting in the press, and they already have picked up this report in the Burnaby now, and I appreciated his remarks in there about it. I hope that when the report that Metro Vancouver is working on, which will talk about not just the homeowner portion of it, but the impact that these assessments are having on small business and like industry and things in the region also will have, will maybe generate some additional interest of the kind of thing that Counselor Dollywell's talking about, because I've been reading about the huge increase in assessed values in Vancouver for some industrial properties, where they're just driving business right out of the city. And I would, maybe arising from this, Your Worship, ask for our staff to comment back to us if we have information, if the same thing is happening here, if there's been, because that's going to be a tremendous impact. So it's not just about residential homeowners, it's also about industrial and business properties where the taxes are getting to the point where small businesses can't pay the rent anymore. And all these houses closing, or businesses closing down on Denman Street and things, local small businesses, because the taxes are more than the rent, because the assessments are so high. So it's a system that is all gone out of whack and no one, they wanted to tinkle around with the edges, but they don't seem to want to grapple with the full extent of the impact that it's having. And I think it needs to be done, and it needs the collective of all the cities in the region to step forward and say, "No, there has to be a better way," and to work together to find that.
Well, I can tell you, from my point of view, there should be a full public inquiry into exactly how these programs are operating, whether or not they're equitable across the province, and equity across the province is very important, and from community to community. You know, when you look at the house that you were talking about on, you know, Noir Drive.
Noir Drive, yes.
I mean, not only do they get the full homeowner grant in a million-dollar house on a $400,000 piece of property, but they also get what is euphemistically called a northern and rural grant directly out of the carbon tax for another $200. So you've got a system in which you're being rewarded in Kelowna with a extension of the assessment, and you're giving an additional $200 out of the carbon tax in an area where I doubt that Kelowna would want to be called either northern or rural. It is in fact a city, and a dynamic city that has a great many assets of its own, and certainly should not be given any kind of stigma as being outside of the normal urban centers. And so I find it unbelievable that you could make a comparison adversely between, for instance, Sanich and Kelowna in regard to whether you should be receiving additional grant monies for living in those locations. In fact, probably more persuasive if you live on the island and you have to take a ferry to get anywhere, that it's more justifiable that you would be getting an additional grant. I'm surprised that people are not reacting more strongly to this with the provincial government, though. They seem to get away with it. And if it wasn't for cities like ours constantly beating this drum, because it certainly isn't happening in other municipalities, I don't think any attention would be paid to it at all. So, you know, really, it's a question of an unfair assessment that is taking away the homeowner grant from a significant amount of people in our community and continuing to award it to homes that are certainly valued much higher as far as the residential part of the home is concerned and other parts of the province. And it is fundamentally unfair to residents here. You know, they should be looking at, if the target is 91%, they should be looking at 91% of the homes in any individual region being able to claim the homeowner's grant. And as you said, is the homeowner's grant, it hasn't even remotely kept up to inflation. So each year, we lose ground on the homeowner's grant. And additionally, when you look at the evaluation of properties here, we end up on the school taxes subsidizing the entire rest of the province. It's ridiculous. Not only that, but they're making it impossible for businesses here to be able to prosper, because those businesses are receiving higher and higher assessments. In particular, the small businesses still have to pay school taxes, while the large industrial businesses that are more capable of making those payments are in fact given a free ride on school taxes. So, you know, this just is a system that is fraught with unfairness, and it needs to be reviewed, and we need to find a system that's much fairer for all of the property owners, whether it's industrial, commercial, or residential homeowners across the province. We have to have a much fairer system. And I agree. I appreciate the work that's being, that you've done, and that the finance committee has done, and that our staff has done, but I wish there were more cities across the region that were taking this issue up with more passion, because I think it should be an election issue. I think it should be something that the province has to answer for in regard to this election. Let me make it perfectly clear for those who don't understand it, is that the provincial government, the Liberal government, knows that their stronghold is in rural British Columbia, and that by giving more to rural British Columbia, they're able to maintain those votes in those areas. Fact is, their strength isn't in the lower mainland or in the capital regional district, and as a result, those two areas are punished in regard to the assessment and in regard to grants. That's the game that's being played, and people here have to understand it, and they have to be prepared to call this government into question for having done that and putting in a policy that just continues to perpetuate an unfair system. It's wrong, and people need to know it.
If I can add one more thing to the list, Your Worship, we have a very strong ally now in the mayor of Valterra. It may not seem like much, but once you get Ralph's attention, Mayor Drew is now on this hobby horse to a greater extent even than myself, because I showed him one day that a house of exactly the same value in Lyons Bay as in Valterra, so again, a $1.4 million house, well, the house in Lyons Bay, the school tax portion of their tax assessment, because every school district has a different mill rate set, right? The school tax for the house in Lyons Bay at $1.4 million pays $1,100 in school tax. A $1.4 million house in Valterra pays $1,700 in school tax. Now you tell me how that works. That's more than 50% higher for the same value house in the same region, and yet the school tax is 50% higher, more than 50% higher in Valterra, and it's about 30% higher in Burnaby than it is in Lyons Bay. So how they set those numbers and how they decide them is a mystery, and only the province knows what little factors they put in on every occasion. So I'm hoping that consultants report that Metro Vancouver is getting, will make that clear as, you know, spring water, but I'm not sure that it will. But anyway, Mayor Drew's on our side now, so we're gradually recruiting a few people to say that something's really wrong.
Valterra might not have been exactly the muscle we needed, but I'll take support wherever we can find it.
We'll take it where we can get it.
Yeah, we need support wherever we can find it. Maybe this is a job that the municipal auditor general should look at. I mean, it would be a good thing for the municipal auditor general, instead of being perceived as someone who's supposed to come into municipalities and tell us what we're doing wrong, actually went in and examined a part of the system where we're being treated unfairly and it's inequitable among municipalities, and tried to straighten that process out, because that would be a very useful job. And the real impact would be in a reduction of property taxes for people here in the lower mainland.
Yep.
Who are, in my view, being treated in a high-handed way. Counselor McEnam?
Thank you, Your Worship. And the point was brought out that nobody else is up in arms, but I think a lot of it is the citizens are too busy working two jobs trying to survive. They don't pay attention to it. And as you mentioned, like Lyons Bay, well, what about Whistler? What about Sunshine Coast, which is, you know, right over there? Ends outside of the Greater Victoria region, or ends outside of Metro Vancouver, they get it. And why do they get it out of the carbon tax? I mean, the carbon tax was supposed to be there for to stop the pollution and that. Well, I think when you get out in those areas, there's a lot less pollution there than there is in Metro Vancouver, just because of the traffic, because of the population size and everything else. That's where, if you're going to take money on the carbon tax to finance something, you should be financing the transit and stuff like this, and says, "You know, that's okay, put it on your property tax, because we're the ones who wear it." And the average taxpayer doesn't sit there and analyze their bill where the money's going. They just say, "The city's charging me this much more." When we worked it out, it was about 51% of what we tax is what we get, and 49% goes to other orders of government. There's the school board, where there's Metro Vancouver, where there's transit, all these other places. So, you know, the average person doesn't pay attention to politics like we do. We're in the, we're in this game, but, and they just don't understand it, and they don't have the time. They're just, like I say, most of them are working two jobs. The middle class is slowly eroding, and it won't be there. If something doesn't change in the next 20 years, you'll have two-class system like a lot of these third-world countries. It's an unfortunate thing, a place like Canada, we can be talking like that, but that's a fact. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for the report from the Financial Management Committee. And you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 3. E, Counselor Johnson.
Government's Community Centre installation of HVAC unit. I would move the recommendation for information purposes. Your Worship, the count, the. Your worship, the county, the Community Centre, Edmonds Community Centre, officially opened in 2013, was built to lead energy standards in order to be environmentally sustainable. But being that it's been in operation for three years, staff have determined that the cooling system in the summer isn't quite bringing the building down to a, a, a temperature that conducive for the, the recreation activities that are happening in the facility. I guess it's partly body heat, partly the summer coming through the glass of the building. The report this before us is initiating a HVAC study so that we can look at adding an additional HVAC unit to the roof of the building in order to bring the summer temperature down to a usable level for, for its users.
All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry. Next report, sir, from the Planning and Development Committee, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. The first report has to do with an R twelve area rezoning and the recommendation is that council authorize the preparation of a rezoning by law to rezone seven three three five to seven three five nine fourteenth Avenue on the north side, as referred to in Schedule A, from R five residential to R twelve residential district and that a bylaw be advanced to first reading on twenty seventeen February sixth and to public hearing on twenty seventeen February twenty eighth at seven P M. and that a copy of this report be sent to the owners and residents in the petition and consultation area. And I so move.
Seconded.
And basically, your worship, there was eighty percent of those surveyed were in support of the rezoning process, so, so according to our policy, it will go forward in the manner reported.
Great. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry.
The next one is also an R twelve area rezoning request and the recommendation is that council not advance the request for R five to R twelve S area rezoning for forty thirty-six to forty ninety-eight Kincaid Street on the south side and that a copy of this report be sent to the property owners and residents in the petition and consultation area.
Seconded.
And, your worship, this, this proposal did not receive the fifty percent required from the properties in the subject area, so it will not proceed.
Question's called, all those in favor, opposed, carry.
The next report from the committee, worship, is proposed zoning by law text amendments for January twenty seventeen and I would move the recommendations contained in the report.
Removed and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
These are mostly housekeeping amendments, your worship, just for council's benefit and the public, just catching up with the building code and a few little other things that have come up lately.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, opposed and carried. The next report is from the social, social planning committee. Counselor Balco is not here tonight, he is ill, just for the record, he is continuing to receive treatment and we send him our very best as he goes through treatment. And Vice Chair Counselor Kang will present the reports.
Thank you, worship. This report is from the social planning committee and the subject is Local Government Awareness Week for twenty seventeen. I move the recommendation that council approve the council's involve, involvement in Local Government Awareness Week twenty seventeen as outlined in section two point two of this report.
Seconded.
Your worship, Local Government Awareness Week is an annual U B C M initiative and it's usually held in May to educate the public about the roles and responsibilities of local government and to encourage public participation in local government process. To support this initiative and just to name a few, Burnaby City Hall is open late on Thursdays in order to better serve the public. Public tours of city halls are offered to the general public and as well as many elementary school students, visit city hall as well and visit, your worship, and get to know the civic government. Last year, there were various events that supported the public engagement for Local Government Awareness Week. We had a city proclamation, encouraged the public to explore the new heritage website and city hall held a joint open house with R C M P in September. With council support, this would be the seventh annual celebration of Local Government Awareness Week in Burnaby. This meaningful annual event also supports our social sustainable strategy and two of the seven strategic priorities which are getting involved and learning for life. The proposed theme this year is celebrating and connecting Burnaby. This theme would promote local government awareness and opportunities to be engaged in civic life through the city's public events and online resources. As twenty seventeen marks the Burnaby's one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday, Local Government Awareness Week and its activities can be coordinated to highlight the one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday activities. So for the approval of council tonight here, the proposed activities for this year are the city proclamation, drawing contests, contests for school aged children, civic awareness videos where you can explore and create short information videos to promote civic awareness. The city will be refreshing our be involved portal, bringing some exciting new updates and we will be celebrating our one hundred twenty-fifth and one hundred fifty-first birthdays with events around our cities. Your worship, you'll be happy to know that all these suggested activities will be undertaken with existing staff and budget resources. The dates for Local Government Awareness Week in twenty seventeen has not yet been announced, although it is typically the third week of May, so I look forward to seeing these events unfold. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Counselor Dallywell.
Thank you. I believe these are, for during that week, these are a number of activities that's wonderful. I think we need to continue to increase awareness of what local governments do. I, I, it's my belief, your worship, I think there remains a, a bit of a mystery as to the services that we provide. A lot of people take it for granted, but what happens every morning when they wake up, there's water out of the tap every morning, just really good quality water comes, same thing's taken away whenever they use it. We have the garbage picked up every week without fail. We provide them services when they need it, police, the R C M P. And not to mention other things, these are some of the big things I mentioned, but when you talk about parks and recreation, direct services we provide, roads, et cetera, the facilities, libraries, it's a lot of services. They don't come to the top of your head when you're not thinking, but if you put that in a, in a, in a concise pamphlet way, what the city does for them, I think a lot of people would be amazed. I, I am certain, most people think that it's the federal government or it's the provincial government that does all this work and they continue to not understand what the cities do for about a dime that we get out of the money that the local, they pay us taxes. Regrettably, to them, they pay property taxes once, once, once a year and it's a big bill for them, but what they pay every week on the wages through other sales taxes, everything like that, is a lot more than what they pay to the local, local government. Yet, everybody seems to think that the private, that property taxes are the one that are really dragging them behind, that's really putting a burden on them. Your worship, I think we need to have something created, I guess, in terms of a display which gives all these services and in fact is a part of like, and for Burnaby type of literature that goes to every home, that what this local government does for the money that we get. And if you look at it, the average homeowner's bill is probably four, five, four thousand dollars on the average kind of thing. That's our share, probably less than that is our share, like when they pay the bill, much of that goes to, to the province as a school, an avenue for school, but what we really get, I'd be surprised if, if every homeowner pays us a ten dollars a week, ten dollars a week, what you get, it's not even per capita, it's per household. And, and there's a lot of services I mentioned, I, I don't think there's a whole lot of where. I see we do not do any justice to ourselves for not then low because people seem to think the local governments are out of touch, they're spending a lot of money because that's what the media tells them, that's what C F I B tells them, that's what everybody else says. How municipalities are out of control, they've been spending so much money, your worship. I think one of the things we can do is perhaps the next year or so, trying to create that awareness at a larger scale, that what local governments provide for a dime that we get. And I think that is one of the things, we don't do our, tell our story, a fiscal story, how successful it is, and in fact, this is the only government that doesn't run deficit, the only government that is probably more secure than anywhere else and yet, and create jobs and all those things, but no one really seemed to appreciate. They don't even come out to vote for us, only about twenty-five percent turn out, they don't think it's important. So I think, your worship, I support all this, we, I think it's a nice time to really send the information out, perhaps too late for this year, but perhaps create something a little bit more complex, which really goes out in the services that we provide for the, for the money they pay. Thank you.
Yeah, or maybe what we should do is do what the provincial government does, is use taxpayers' money to put advertisements on the hockey games telling how wonderful they are. Apparently it's okay to do that. Can you imagine if municipalities were spending tens of millions of dollars to put out ads telling people how great we are?
Face for the taxpayers who have difficulty affording their homes and here you're watching a hour, news hour and seeing a hockey game to say, oh, guess what? And, you know, the partisan ads are for the same money that we pay, we can't afford to buy, keep our taxes, can't pay for the property taxes, but they're spending on, on those things. This has got to be the worst treatment that the taxpayers can get at, at the hands of any government.
Well, you know, it's pretty good when you can just put out those ads saying, we put a fifteen percent on foreign property buyers, of course, we're going to have to give it back now, but we did that and you look at that and you say, the public seems okay with it when it's the provincial government doing it, when it's the federal government doing it and municipal governments, we don't do those kind of things, we just consistently perform. Anyway, it's frustrating. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carry. Next report, social planning.
Thank you, worship. This report is from the social planning committee. The subject is Burnaby Access Advisory Committee for Twenty Seventeen Work Plan. I move the one recommendation that the committee request council to approve the proposed Burnaby Access Advisory Committee Work Plan as outlined in section three point zero of this report. I so move.
Seconded.
Your worship, the Burnaby Access Advisory Committee is a committee that provides advice and direction to the planning and building department on access and inclusion issues. It was established in nineteen eighty-eight and is made up of Burnaby residences and city department staff and Fraser Health Authority and this committee meets by monthly. Since its establishment in nineteen eighty-eight, the committee has pursued several initiatives directed towards the improvement of private and public services and facilities to better accommodate persons with disabilities. So this is also another example of what civic government does as we look at accessibility to make sure that our citizens are included and are able to access our services and buildings. So examples are include and certainly not limited to making recommendations to include requirements for designated parking spaces, installations of curb cuts and accessible bus stops at various intersections and participation in Access Awareness Day and United Nations Day of Persons with Disabilities community events. Briefly, here is an overview of the twenty sixteen activities. At Bonza Recreation Complex, there was a purchase of an aquatic wheelchair to enable access to the pool deck, change rooms and showers. At Eileen Daily Leisure Pool, also Kensington Arena and Burnaby City Hall, there was an installation of automatic doors to the main entrance. At the McGill Library, there was an installation of automatic doors on family washroom. There was a celebration of Access Awareness Day at Edmonds Community School where there were human, human books and people were able to share accessibility from their own stories to kids. And a planned film night at Tommy Douglas Library, it will be rescheduled because of a, a snowstorm on that day. And committee continues to monitor the needs for curb cuts, audible pedestrian traffic signal, sidewalk improvements, street furniture and other access improvements to city facilities. So tonight for city councils, for council's adoption, tonight there are proposed twenty-seven work plan. There are eleven points as written down on this report, most of it are inclusive of our accessibility and inclusion models that we have seen in our twenty sixteen. So, your worship, I'm very supportive of this report and I thank the citizens and staff who have put their time to make our city a more welcoming, accessible and inclusive community. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, counselor. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry. Moving on to the city manager's report, item one. And this is to obtain council approval for the assignment and or extension of terms of four existing upland consent agreements. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item two. This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the supply and delivery of garbage and yard waste containers. Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. A question to staff, probably the director of engineering or his replacement tonight. It's a large amount and a large number of toters and just wondering, are we replacing all the toters or are we replacing toters that are being requested for replacement and then switch over to other?
I think we're replacing the ones that are being requested to replace because with the conversion of the two-week program, two-week pickup for garbage, there might be some that want to reassess the size of their toters and so we anticipate some, some changeover and, and this supply would help with that.
Okay, and the other question is, these toters are purchased from out of the city and out of the province?
I don't know where for sure, sorry.
Do we have a memo on that? Oh, yes, okay. Isn't there a supplier that's closer to home? This comes from the States and given the exchange on the dollar, it must be rather expensive to purchase in the U S these days.
Yeah, I don't know the, that, I can get back to you.
Yes, memo.
Yeah.
The performance that is being recommended here was a little bit taking into consideration the foreign exchange rates, et cetera, so even in spite of that, they are still.
Were there bidders in Canada, do you, do you know?
I do not know, there were two other bids and this one was selected on the basis of their ability to apply.
Your worship, I know that there is a supplier and maker in Burnaby that does make the exact same toters we do, in fact, they recycle our old ones and perhaps staff should make contact with the local manufacturer and supplier and see whether they can match.
All of our requests would go out to, to bid B C where we would have this done very publicly and, you know, we follow all of the rules in relation to making sure that every competitive bidder is going to have an opportunity to bid. I don't know if the, if in this particular case, the, they may have been busy, may not have looked at this as being a contract that they were competitive on, but why don't we get staff to simply give you a little bit more information about who the bidders were, whether there were any Canadian competitors and then you can assess whether the company you know was actually bidding or may contact them and ask why.
Not to belabor this, your worship, but and not to wanting to be a President Trump, perhaps we should serve a little bit of his own medicine in certain deals we make.
You're not talking about a Buy Canada program, are you?
Would that hurt?
Oh my God, that would be like nationalistic. What about globalization? What about the opportunity to be globalized?
NAFTA too, yeah. Well, NAFTA won't be anymore, so.
Well, we all know NAFTA only goes one way anyway, so. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry. Item three, this is to obtain council approval for a contract increase of seven hundred thousand dollars, including J S T, to Crown Contracting Limited for the repair and maintenance of street lights and traffic.